Oh, I've got an event tonight.
Six o'clock, if you can call us, we need to order for the Holiday Island City Advertising and Promotion Commission for October the seventh at six P M., regular meeting. Uh, if we could stand for the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, you can take the roll call.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Elwood.
Here.
Chairman Holland.
Here.
Vice Chair Lawler.
Here.
Secretary Treasurer Loderweigs here. Commissioner Plumley.
Here.
Commissioner Straggans, excuse absence, we have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Uh, moving on to the agenda.
I'd like to, uh, ask for a change in the agenda, please. Under, um, the minutes, there's a special meeting of September thirtieth minutes attached into the package. And under new business, uh, to read Tyler's resignation letter.
Oh. I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. You have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the minutes. I move we approve the minutes as presented.
I second it.
You have a first and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Secretary, if you want to go on to the financial report.
There are copies there for the audience. Uh, we're lucky, we have an interest sparing account, so we made twenty-five dollars and eighteen cents. Um, our advertising bill, one hundred seventy-four, was the one-third for September. Uh, the agreement where we're paying one-third of the fund guide and HISA is paying the other two-thirds. So that was the September, uh, October is already paid for next month. Uh, as a result, we have eight thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents available.
All right, and we still have?
Eight thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents.
And we have a couple other bills that are coming out of this and coming up.
And we've been lucky that we've had, um, free Wi-Fi service, et cetera, for the first three months under the plan that he's chosen.
Cool. Any questions on the financials? No?
No, I would just drag, never mind, I.
All right.
My math wasn't working like it is.
No questions on the financials, we'll move on to the business. Moving on to, uh, we actually have it under old business, we've discussed A and P tax. Uh, a lot of questions have come up about HISA. Uh, fortunately, Rich Viggen's, Dan Keyes, both are here for, um, the district of HISA and for the mayor for Holiday Island. Um, some of y'all have requested to ask some questions. And, uh, so they're both here, so, uh, we'll take, it's one of you at a time and we'll just open it up and everybody's gobs.
What, sort of quarter or?
It's a quarter. Any, any preference?
Where's the eight before beauty? Well, I. It's age before beauty, um.
Cause you're way there looking.
It's, it's, uh, no hair bef- before a hair.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a close call. Yeah, that's a real close call.
And look, Mike's talking, cause he's way, way.
Hello, I'm Rich Viggen's, I'm the district manager of Holiday Island.
There you go. Uh, we'll just open the floor and start letting measures ask questions, I know there's a couple of them, so.
With all the talk on social media, you know, there's a lot of mistrust in the community of S I D.
Mm-hmm.
The big thing is they think that S I D can control the collection of this A and P tax. Can they?
Can we control it? No, that's why you have a board.
That's the question I needed to hear answered so that the community can hear that.
Yes, the A and P is ran by a board and that's who controls the A and P tax.
Okay, does the S I D have any control on how it's spent?
No.
Okay.
We, I believe we can give suggestions, but.
But you can't tell us to spend it here, spend it there.
But, yeah, suggestions are not telling you how to do it.
Yeah, okay. Maybe that would help settle a lot of the questions and all that out in the public.
Well, we get, just, I, for clarification, we get this passed in November. Uh, the, if HISA wanted to do an activity, they could apply like anybody else.
They could apply for it, yes.
I mean, they would be just, just like I am with Friends of the Barn or Hi-Ha or, or anybody else is doing it, like fireworks or whatever, they could, they could apply like anybody else, so they could get a benefit out of it directly.
But a lot of people are saying that they can come in and say, okay, y'all have to spend this money here. Y'all have to spend this money on the.
We need to direct them to the state statute, which says they can't.
But, with, my thoughts are with them saying it now for them to hear.
Yes.
That might do away with a lot of distrust and help us out.
You think people are?
No. No.
Facts don't seem to work.
I, I know, but the facts are there.
When is HISA going to apply for licenses?
When is the city gonna tell us we have to?
Hey, you have to.
We can't, we can't do that. We can do that tomorrow.
I meant to talk to you about that.
I knew this was gonna get brought up, and this is something we need to, I mean, I guess it's, it's on the city to decide what fees we have to pay and what areas we have to pay. I think it's something else that we need to discuss and figure out exactly the payments in what areas. I mean, that's where we're at, and as soon as me and Dan figure that out, then we will be so-called cutting the check.
And if, if this is just an open discussion, I can add that, uh.
Yes.
To, to, just to follow up on what Rich was saying, at the current, uh, the, the way the ordinance stands right now, there is no category that HISA would fit into, so we'll have to amend the ordinance to add something to the table of fees so that we, uh, have some clarity there. I'll have that on the agenda for the next city council meeting.
And can that be passed with, on an emergency clause, you don't have to read it twice?
I'm not sure, I'll have to look. I, I don't know, I'd have to check.
Since, uh, they wouldn't have to start paying it until April, there's no need for an emergency clause?
Yeah, sure.
Only so that it's clear for the vote.
Yeah.
Ah, I got it. Safe, since November fifth is like.
It'd have to be done before January.
Mm-hmm.
And then, I mean, that gives you three, I mean, if you pass it this month, they give you three readings, or time for three.
And we can do three readings in one day, it wouldn't work there.
I think that would clarify so much questions from the public also, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we had a discussion about a week ago about, uh, particularly the campground, and I was one on the board that, uh, I'm representing B O C, Board of Commissioners, and I said, and we talked about the pavilion specifically at the campground, and that the campground itself, uh, has rental every night, every unit that comes in, Kent, R V, motorhome, whatever, we understand that that's a, a rental. So that's thirty bucks a night, uh, the, if, when the, uh, passes on November fifth, uh, there would be three percent tax on those, uh, items. The pavilion was a concern of mine, and that I don't think that's, uh, and I've been RVing for five years with two different RVs all around the country, and the pavilion or the common area, and I won't take a whole lot of time tonight to go over it again, but that, that pavilion area is, uh, for all of the campers that are in there, all of the R V owners that are in there, and they either have hot dogs, they have, uh, games, they have, uh, smores, whatever it is, a group of people get together and it's a really nice, uh, uh camaraderie there with the, uh, with the R V'ers. But I don't think that HISA should have to pay, and I was gonna call Danny or, or you, Rich, and see, I don't think we've ever rented that to anybody, like, mo- most RV parks you go to, if you wanna use it, let's say you have ten people come in for a family reunion, first come, first served, you know? But we like it, uh, six days, seven on Friday night, we got people coming in from Michigan or Florida, good. We take Brown sign up and, and that's the way it is, and there's no charge usually for it. Uh, usually it's near the shower room and near the laundry facilities and so forth, so on. So, my, my point to the other commissioners was, I don't think that's, um, a legitimate, if you will, uh, charge for a nightly rental, because it's not rented. It's a part of the overall thirty, forty, fifty dollars or whatever you pay to get that, uh, spot for your tent or RV.
There's a misunderstanding, Ken.
Well.
Danny had offered the pavilion before he opens for the campers, or after he closes for the campers, in the couple days in which the water is not turned off.
But Danny's not the district manager, Danny is not the board of commissioners. The board of commissioners decides what's gonna be rented and what's not gonna be rented. And I like Danny a lot, I, I really appreciate what he does down there, but this is, we, we, we need to get, you know, uh, and I'm not gonna take all night, I did, uh, several nights in a row and I got real upset about it. So, I think that's a point that we've gotta find out after November fifth, and it would be a discussion between this committee and the B O C and the district manager.
This committee has nothing to do with it.
Well, it does, but anyway, you have your point, I have my point.
No, how, if they, if they don't rent it, it's not a Jordan rental.
Yeah, the pavilion is included with the campground, the campsite.
Okay.
We do not rent it, this, well, we do not rent it.
Yeah.
Out separately, and if you're camping there and you have a party there, it's included with your campsite, so it would not. It would just fall under the campground.
Okay.
Three percent of zero is zero.
Yeah, okay.
Well, if someone wanted, decided to have a, and this is what I was trying to get at when this got brought up, had a wedding there in November, and they wanted to rent the campground as a party wedding.
They can rent camping spots and have the pavilion with the camping spots.
That's, that's my point I was getting at.
Yeah.
When all this got brought up, even though the actual camping hours or time is October first, whatever, but if they wanted to come do it in November, they could still rent from HISA as a.
They could rent a camping spot with no water facilities.
So.
I mean, that's, we would, we, if somebody wanted to come in and do a wedding at the campground with the pavilion, we would rent them camping spots.
Okay.
Without water.
Okay.
So, we'd make it work.
And also, we have a pavilion over by the pickleball course, it's perfect, it's got electricity.
I agree.
Yes, and covered and tables and everything, that would be the place that you'd wanna, November fifteenth, to have a, a event. And, uh, also, Mike, I wanted to, Mr. Chairman, if I can, uh, we, and Rich put out a, a missive last Friday, I believe it was, about, uh, social media. If people wanna know what's gonna happen at this committee, they can tune in, it's right on there. Uh, and I just, I'm getting very upset with social media and all of the misconceptions that are, are put forth there. We have an agenda, we're all honest people, we're putting it on tape, it's on the record. Uh, there's no question about what we're doing, and if social media wants to twist it all around and make lies and so forth, half truths, then that's up to the person. And then, the other night, I saw somebody at the set anonymous, they don't even have the courage to put Ken Brown down, or whatever their name is, and so, I don't think we should worry a whole lot about social media. We need to do our job that we've been appointed to do.
Mm-hmm, but if we can get the truth out through social media, we have more avenues to get the truth out there.
Well, that's kind of the, the reason for this too, is getting answers here, it's recorded, it's on record, it's on video, everybody can watch it, and so these questions that keep on coming out from all these different places.
Right.
Are simply answered here.
Good.
And, uh, we're, we're a month away from voting on A and P, so, yeah, there's no real better time to do it than now.
Okay.
Any other questions for, for Mr. Viggen's? Do you have any questions for us?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Perfect.
See what happens.
Gotta work.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Mike, your.
Yeah, your turn.
Any questions?
Any questions? What does the city have involved with the A and P?
Uh, the city actually doesn't have any, um, connection to the A and P. They, they work autonomously from the city council, the city council approves their budget once a year, but after that, um, you know, the, the A and P, like I said, is pretty autonomous. It, they're responsible for collecting the tax, they're responsible for deciding what it gets spent on, and, uh, the city itself is basically out of it.
Well, it's all, they didn't get answers, and it weighs out there.
And if I were to make a suggestion, uh, you're right, Ken, you know, trying to fight social media is impossible. Um, but, uh, it wouldn't hurt to make some notes about the misinformation that's being spread. And even though the city nor the A and P commission can advocate, directly advocate or spend tax money, directly advocating for the passage of the, of the, um, ballot initiative, I don't think it would be, um, out of line, or certainly not illegal, to do a, um, a Q and A. Just, just, you know, take the, take the misinformation that's being spread, draft a question that addresses that, and then put the correct answer down.
Well, I just kinda like what this is, and I, I just.
And, uh, now, how you get that, how you distribute that is the tough part, you know? If you don't have a Facebook page or something like that, how that gets distributed is difficult. And if anybody can ever, you know, crack the code on how to communicate with the public, please come and talk to me, because it is the most difficult part about this job, is communicating the correct information to the public.
While, while we're talking about that, getting information out, you normally put out some message every so often. Can we put our Q and A out along with that?
We could do that, I could do that.
And, um, uh, Mr. Viggen, do you also put out a weekly newsletter, can we put it in that?
We could put in a question, I can put down an answer, so.
Mm-hmm.
There's two avenues of putting it out there in this time frame.
We, we kinda followed that format to some extent when we, when the Committee for Incorporation was, was forming, you know? We did, you know, in, in the, in the presentation, we did some kinda Q and A things and, and, you know, that, that'll put some of it to rest, although there are people that are gonna say, yeah, that's what they say, but you can't trust them, you can't, you know, they're government, you can't trust them, there's, there's nothing you can do.
You can't do anything about those, you know?
The, the Holiday Island Short Term Tax Committee has a Q and A that they pass around along with a, uh, brief from Goudahole Brewery, who was fighting for the C A P C to stay, and there's also, uh, understanding A and P, so should anyone come to any of the open meetings, they'll get a copy of it also, yes?
Can we tell them to put it online and put a link to it?
Okay.
On all social media pages?
We certainly can ask them.
Yeah, because, you know, passing it out to a few people who attend, who happen to attend, is not gonna get the social media people informed.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, we need to, you know, we need to watch what's going on in Eureka Springs, because all of the good things they say about why they should have an A and P tax applied to us, every, every one of them, and, um, so, you know, the more we can piggyback on that, the better. Anything else?
As long as people understand, I actually had somebody call me the other night, said, why are the people in Eureka Springs against this A and P, cause they're all got signs out saying vote no, it's a, that's a, they're not in our, that, that's a different thing, and they're exactly the opposite.
Yeah, it's, it's no to repeal.
I know, it's no to appeal, and they're, and they don't vote in our election anyway, it would be a.
But there are.
He just also no in the A and B, and like.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the mayor and, uh, district manager. Uh, we're gonna start next week, I think, Rich, uh, on our budget discussions, I think you are also at the city. Uh, but as far as, uh, this committee, when it passes, February fifth, uh, we are, we are obligated to be in sort of a narrow, uh, path of what we're allowed to spend money on, but I think there's been some misconception from the public and maybe social media to some extent about what we can do with those funds to help HISA lower their, um, assessment, and that's one of my goals as a commissioner, but, um, i- if we were to get any money from the city to help fire police, like you're doing with Sheriff Steppes and so forth, it would not come from this committee, it would come from other sources, right?
Right, yeah, A and P tax money cannot be used to cover normal operating expenses for the city. That's the law.
Okay.
And, uh, so if the city, uh, you know, whatever the city contributes towards the operation of the fire department has to come out of the city budget, not A and P money.
Okay.
Same for the police, same for code enforcement.
And the A and P does not lower the A O Bs.
And I knew that, I just wanted the mayor to reiterate that, but, uh, it's good to know, yeah.
You know, kinda, you know, when you, when you look at it from a purely budgetary standpoint, the A and P committee, or the A and P tax, has more opportunity to benefit the district than us.
Yeah.
Because the A and P committee can take over, uh, whatever they were spending on advertising and promotion, and if we bring, not if, but when we bring more people into Holiday Island, a lot of them will play golf, that'll offset the expenses for operating the golf course, things like that, so, um.
Uh, Mayor, I'll, I'll give you an example of what I think might work, let's say July fourth next, uh, year, great holiday, we want everybody coming in here, and the city and the S I D go together and they say, we're gonna sponsor, co-sponsor a huge celebration, and we need X dollars from the A and P committee. So, in that regard, we could give money to the city and the S I D for that function.
The, I think the A and P tax would directly pay for whatever part of that function they're going to cover. They wouldn't funnel that money through the city account.
But let's say the fireworks are ten thousand, and without this, the S I D would have to pay five, and the city would have to pay five, cause we're gonna go together on this thing. I'm, I'm just proposing, you know? But if, uh, if we were to give three thousand, the S I D gives three, the city gives three, and this tax gives three, wouldn't that work? Or isn't that a possibility?
Yeah, yeah, sure, it's a possibility.
Possibility, we could give nine, and it wouldn't have.
That's, I think that's the objective.
That's where you're on this committee.
Well, I mean, if we're planning on bringing in six figures for this.
Yeah.
The fireworks at most would cost fifteen probably.
Yeah.
We could pay the whole thing if they made an application and we approved it.
Okay.
But if you look at, you know, I, I've, I've been on the bandwagon, and Peggy knows this, I've been on the bandwagon since day one, that what we need in Holiday Island is events.
Yeah.
You know, the, the, uh.
Rib surprise.
Rib cook-off was a great success, the chili cook-off is a great success. We need events like that, you, you know, Eureka Springs has got an event every weekend all year long.
They have forty-seven between now and the end of the year.
Yeah, and it brings thousands, hundreds of thousands of people into town, and they all spend money.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's, you know, you can spend a lot of money advertising and vacation, you know, brochures that are in, in the roadside, uh, you know, waysides and stuff like that for people to read, but that's a real crapshoot that those people are gonna read that and say, oh, hell yeah, I wanna go to Holiday Island.
Well, and talking about the ribs and rides, we gave them two hundred and fifty dollars in the grant, is what we gave that event, uh, Mr. Viggen, they, they rented the area down there. Do you know what the total was of the S I D, uh, got from that whole event going on that weekend?
The whole renting of it, just the renting of everything was, um, less than five hundred bucks, so, yeah.
So it was even more than we had granted out in money, plus the additional people that came around.
Um, one more little statement, we just saved it up. Then I wanna clear up, since we're, um, everybody at Holiday Island is like, well, this is going, this tax is going to affect us as a, you know, a property owner or as a person in town. It is going to affect the property owners very, very, very little. You are, as a property owner, you already get a discount price for rental of the stuff, and you're not gonna see that three percent increase on rental of the barn or anything like this. It's mainly targeted towards the tourists that come to town. People on, on Holiday Island will not see very little of that tax effect. So you're not gonna, you live here, you're not gonna rent an Airbnb for a week, that's the only time it's gonna feature.
Anything else?
I bet, got all my questions answered.
None of mine.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Uh, both y'all, thank you for coming, and, and I know it's short notice to get here, but, uh, it's worth the time to try to air out some of these things, to get them cleared, cause it, it's everywhere. Uh, what, what isn't the case with A and P, and this should help that. Uh, anybody else, or any questions on that discussion of the old business? If not, we'll move on to discussion of the future of public meetings. Mr. Chairman, if you will, give us an update on what we have for this.
This Thursday, October tenth, six P M., Hi-Ha is allowing us to, um, give our three-minute announcement uh, time about the A and P, and then, um, there are scheduling pieces for everyone to look at. Uh, our next open public will be Thursday, October twenty-fourth, at six P M. in the ballroom. Uh, Monday, October twenty-eighth, at six P M. in the ballroom, and then Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, at six P M. In the campground pavilion.
Oh, we have one scheduled for October seventeenth.
It had to be moved.
Oh.
Oh, no, you're right, October seventeenth, that's the right date, October, it's six P M. in the ball, in the barn, yes, sir.
Barn.
Thank you, in the barn. So there are four public meetings as well as the Hi-Ha meeting.
Okay. And at the, uh, Hi-Ha meeting, you're just giving the intro to the bar, is that correct?
Yes, yes. And we'll see if the Holiday Island.
I, I bet you, I bet you get a few questions that last longer than three minutes.
Well. Hopefully they come.
At least they're questions.
Yeah, hopefully they come.
Yeah.
Could I ask, uh, if we could put these dates in as a Kerrigus newsletter every Friday?
They are in there.
If we send them to her?
They are in there, they've been in there. Yeah, but I'll get the, I'll ask her about the Q and A questions for this week.
I don't know if you all know, but there's about sixteen hundred people that read that. We just got on the email addresses that go out every Friday, that's a lot.
Mm-hmm, and there's nine hundred and fifty, nine hundred and ninety-six at the Chamber Chat going out to the different people too.
Good.
It's been in there too.
Hope you do a good job of it.
Any questions on the public meetings coming up? Moving on to the next item, uh, we're gonna put in the, um, amended part with Tyler's information. Mr. Chairman, if you want to read the email.
Dear A and P Chair and Committee Members, I am sending this email as my resignation from the A and P Committee between the large workload at the golf course and the family medical issues. I do not feel like I can dedicate enough of my time to justify staying on the committee. If anyone has any questions in the future that I may be able to answer, please feel free to contact me. Best of luck, Tyler Straggans, Golf Course Superintendent.
I move with regret that we accept a letter of resignation from Tyler Straggans. We have a second?
We have to.
I don't think we can stop him.
I, I don't think so either, uh, if, if you want a second and wrote on, we can, but.
Plumley's seconded it.
We do have a second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the term regret is very important.
Yes.
Um, this brings up the process of, uh, filling that seat, and, um, we will need to appoint somebody to that seat, and then it is approved by the city council, um, at another date.
What kind of, what year term is that?
He had a three-year term.
Three-year, great.
Yeah, and the next city meeting, I understand, is, uh, the twenty-second? So, if we could.
Twenty-second.
Yeah.
And it has to be somebody?
In the hos- hospitality.
Hospitality industry.
Tourist industry.
The, uh, the limitation, looks like it has changed, the law changed last year with that. Um, there are three that have to be for.
There are three that have to be from Airbnb, hotel motel, or restaurants. Uh, the fourth one can be from a tourist industry. There is no definition for that tourism industry, and so we'd have to try to define that.
Was golf a tourist industry?
It was.
And mine was VOC and short-term rental.
Yes, entitled to a restaurant.
Go ahead.
For the clubhouse.
Um, so Airbnb owners are gonna be the primary deal. They do not have to reside inside the city, they have to reside inside the county. But they do have to have the business mechanism inside of Holiday Island.
Would that be a problem then coming to a meeting in Green Forest or Alpina or something?
The state statute, as long as it's limited to them living in the county, that's the only limitation. And we can do scheduling, when we get down to scheduling, but I would expect that we would probably have to meet on the 21st to get it by the 22nd to the City Council.
Um, the 21st has the HICID nomination at 6:00. So.
So backing up another.
It have to, may I ask, it have to be like October 14th or 15th is the only days that there's nothing city-oriented or AMP-oriented at this point.
You're saying, hello, no, meeting, let's say Monday, October 14th.
Or Tuesday, October 15th.
Approved that we person, and send that to the City Council.
So the City Council will be on the 22nd.
We can put that in when we go to scheduling.
We have the work session 9:00 AM that morning, October 14th to November 14th, Shansky.
You do.
And the 21st for regular?
Right.
No, regular means 21, or work session's 21st, regular means 28th.
28th?
21st, 28th.
Okay. 21st, 28th.
Work sessions, 21st.
I remember about signing things and so forth.
And at 6:00 on the 21st is the nomination meeting.
Yeah. All right. We'll take care of that when we get down to scheduling and get that part scheduled down. Moving on to budget, discussion on budget. The original budget was to put us through till November the 5th, and I guess, on the good side of this, we still have a majority of the money still sitting in the account. There were a lot of things cut out in the original budget, like the computer hardware, uh, software, going with the AWS services kept us from spending quite a bit of money.
And you got some good rates for free for the first three months also, we didn't have to pay.
There are, you know, we spent a whole lot less than what we had planned to spend in the budget. And with that, actually, if we could table the budget discussion until after discussion on advertising and website that's in the agenda, that may make more sense at that point if we wanna table it.
I move to table the budget until after we talk about advertising and website.
Okay. We have first, we have second? We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So we'll table that one until we get down to the end of the advertising website. Uh, going down to the advertising, we had talked about doing some social media advertising, started back, we had some problems with record retention and everything else that held up, bringing the social media online. So we did not start that advertising online around the barbecue ribs and ride events that kind of delayed some of that. With that being the case, I guess the question now is, do we look at some of this advertising before this month is up? We do have some rates on. I guess time period is, is one of the worst time periods. We're waiting on November 5th vote for next year, but all the advertisers are putting all the stuff together right now to put in place for 2025. And they're doing all that behind at this point.
Sure, I have a question. I got a email, I think it was the other day, and it had to do with Hypro, but it had to do with Magic Jack. And I didn't really understand that there was a keyboard and a six on it, but I didn't know what to do with it. Uh, and the question I have about that is, is Hypro, have they expended anything that they're able to expend for us in terms of signs and so forth? And there's this Magic Jack phone system where people call in on it that Hypro was running, is that being transferred over to us or is it?
Hypro is still running that phone line at this point.
Are they gonna give it to us later?
The number was given to us, and we're gonna put it on our phone after May, after November 5th, so they will not have to use the Magic Jack.
Is there a cost that we're paying for that after?
We are currently not paying for that, that would be something that we would do after we obtain the numbers.
And we wouldn't use the Magic Jack, because that's a landline phone versus having it just here right and carrying it around.
Okay. I did have a question on, and I should know this and I don't, but under advertising, current period, we had $174, so 6.57%. Was that on the?
That was the fund guide where we pay one-third and HICID pays two-thirds. And they'll be in October, we do it again, and then there's, November is for November and December. Okay, because there's nine issues, but November, December is one, January, February is one issue. And the rates historically was 522, they wanna bring it up to like 622 or $900 a month.
I did get an email today that October 15th is the cutoff for the 2025 fund guide.
Yeah, that's what, yes.
That's what we keep on running into the problem with is cutoffs for 2025 are coming now, and we're still at a point that we don't know if the AMP passes.
Yeah. But I think if you wanted to pass that to me, then.
I was gonna ask for an extension due to this, but we'll see what they say.
Yeah. Would HICID temporarily be willing to continue two-thirds and we do one-third until after the vote?
There's something we can talk about.
And we've all, HICID's always used the Eureka Springs Visitor Sky, that's 300, $3,950. That's that full-page colored ad. We also looked at various billboards, and the map of the billboard is, ones from Rogers are like 1,650 dollars a month for, yes, nine months, uh, 19,000. The ones coming down from, in Missouri are 400 a month, so that's 4,800. The ones coming from Rogers are digital, 12 by 40 foot, and the ones coming from Missouri are seven by 13, solid billboards. So that's a possibility to bring people in.
But our total budget from the city up to the top of the page is 9,000, and we have percent of budget, 100%, and gross revenue, other interests like you just said earlier.
We have 80, $8,600 to spend.
But if we obligated before the election of 1,500 a month or whatever, we're looking at large.
Yeah, I understand.
I think it's too big, right?
Yes. We were giving you what research showed. And, you know, we know that digital boosting with our Facebook seems to bring in a lot of people. It brought in over 131 new fishermen for the fish tournament that Chamber had, and 353 people for the ribs and rides and car show from five different states, because we boosted. So the social media boosts work really well for us.
Peggy, just, just so I can understand, I'm just focusing on one, I'm looking at the one, the gateway.
Yes.
And to understand, it says facing west and left, $400 slash four weeks annually.
Right.
And 600, that means $600 to make the sign.
Yes.
And $400 slash four weeks annually, what does that?
Well, it, it's up for there four weeks a month times 12, because you have, it's annual, so it'd be 12 times 400.
Okay.
And you're looking at 64392, is that the number with it?
The parcel number, panel number?
Panel number.
I don't see the panel number.
Top, top.
64392, I'm just, as an example, rather.
That's this one right here.
One of the things I noticed in the independent paper, in the other paper, is the CAPC over Eureka really looks at the number of clicks or whatever you call it on social media, on what they're paying for. And they're centering in a five-state area, five-city area, Tulsa, Dallas, and so forth, Kansas City. And it really is right to the number of how many people look at that. I don't know if they can tell how many came in to Eureka because of that, but it really gives more than a billboard. I go by the billboard four times a week, and I may not come over here to stay, but the social media, the one they're using is quite specific.
Right, we, we got the analytics, one of the ones we boosted for the Chamber. We knew that we're 4,600 people, looked at it, 500, shared it, all those. And it was, you know, like 10 cents a, a person to advertise, so it really is very effective.
And as far as numbers of 64392 billboards that I was talking about, says that its weekly impressions is 57,718.
To Dan and Rich.
Peggy, when you, or Pat was asking about four weeks a month and so forth, are those a kind of change, or like?
The 1,600 changed, the 1,600 a month changed, the other ones are stationary. But I, I passed it, Rich, so that you can kind of see that.
Until we were to get more Airbnb, more short-term rental paying in, some of those costs are just way out of our league.
That's true. That's true. And advertising, like the Chamber did for the barbecue, the one-quarter colored ad was like $300 for one time.
Okay.
Okay, but it did bring in people from Eureka, and that's what we were trying to focus while they were there, you know, to come up here.
So do you know the, the deadline time is still January 1 on the Eureka Chamber of Commerce visitor guide, is that the same this year as last year?
Yes, but they want it sooner, I mean, they prefer it sooner.
Peggy, on your great show, the car show, the barbecue, everything at the barn and the rec center, did you get a feel for how the people that came from out of Holiday Island heard about it?
Most of it was the social media and which then conducted word of mouth. And we also worked with Eureka Springs, they put in 150 of our flyers into their packages so that the car show people, after they're there for Friday and Saturday, then they came up here to get one more trophy. So I have been working with Eureka Springs, and a lot of our announcements are in their monthly paper. Also, if we're on their Chamber website or the calendar, so people are looking to see what to do.
I did find my answer in that, it is December 31st the deadline on that one.
Well, you can understand, even if I would be able to tell NATA, the Northwest Arkansas Tourist Association, their deadline's November 1st, so that all the Chamber activities are already on their list, as well as Holiday Island Singers. And I think those were the only other things that the public would be invited to.
Look, let me ask you, in the budget, did we, we did set aside something and take a vote on setting aside half of the NATA contingent on the city paying the other half? Did we put that in or?
Not in the contract, I mean, there was nothing about NATA.
What is NAPA?
It's the Northwest Arkansas Tourist Association. It's a $2,500 bill that usually, it was the city and then HICID, the city and HICID, is that right? They alternated years.
Going back to Hypro again, and I know we discussed this a lot, but I'm not sure where we are now, the number of leads that they get.
Yeah, they get 700 leads for 1,400.
We're paying for that?
No.
They're paying for that?
Right.
How much money did they have left?
Well, they had asked, they had collected additional money, but HICID had been paying for it also. But again, those leads, I'm getting 3,000 leads from NATO for free as soon as they can release them. So we'll help, we'll be working with those 3,000 leads. And they came from the Northwest Arkansas Magazine trailer, where they click on it if they were interested in Holiday Island.
And where does that go, to HICID or Realtor or what?
No, no, it goes to the Hypro or going to AMP, where we would suggest they come here when we have our events and everything, because we're not a real estate agent and neither's Hypro. We just wanna bring them into our wonderful events and our amenities, and maybe they'll like to buy.
I think, Rich, you and I had talked about, and I know you were interested in, excuse me, in the future, maybe we would have an employee, I don't know if it'd be full-time or not, but would sort of be the focal point for some of these requests, some of these people that are in Kansas City and wanting to come to Holiday Island. I know they've got a big, sort of a large staff over at Eureka, but would respond to them and give them more information and so forth if they are contacting us about coming here to visit or move here.
Well, with the Chamber and now with the AMP, I mean, that would be probably part of their goal, your goal. So if somebody contacts us, I would probably push them off to, hey, you can, the AMP, to look for guidance in that. And plus, we, in our newsletter, we're in Holiday Island newsletter, and then we put in stuff for advertising of that for people that were wanting to move here for their sorts of needs.
Fortunately Vernon and Donna, you know, are willing to continue helping in being ambassadors to work with the people that are coming in on the events.
She's leaving tomorrow morning.
Well, I know that, but that's only for the winter. She'll be back.
And she has a computer.
And just a phone.
With that, I think when we come back for the next special meeting, we can bring back up this advertising thing again. Because I'm pretty sure this board made a vote based on the NATA of half the amount, and then passed it to the city to see if the city was gonna cover the other half, and I'll go back and look.
Same here. The city, do you remember?
It doesn't ring a bell, but.
Did you get an invoice?
If it's, can, can, can we get some money from the city? I, I have that message blocked.
I know we went as hard as asking NATA to send the invoice for the membership to the city.
Right, and have they, have you seen an invoice? No, okay.
Not that I'm, not that I recall.
I'll follow up about the receipt of an invoice, and then we'll look for the one-half half.
It'll be, yeah.
Okay.
On that 700 lead thing, you know, the city was kicking in some money for that too.
Oh, were they?
Yeah, quite a bit of money, actually.
Is that just recently?
Well, within the last year.
Yeah, okay.
I thought we paid 700, but 1,400.
Yeah, 1,400 was the whole thing, 700 would have been half at least, or something.
750.
That was a lead part that Hypro was getting to the force?
But they didn't have any way of tracking, they sent it out through Mailchimp, and they said there was less than 5% open rate. Okay, and I suggested to they share these names with the Chamber, because we get up to 2,000 names for free, and we could easily put theirs in, uh, 5,000 up free, we could easily put those in and send it out through Constant Contact, which gets a better return. Like I got over 70% return on the emails that I sent out. So I'd offered to do that, representing the promoting of our amenities.
Let's go, I'm from Moline, Illinois, I think that's the city, Moline, Illinois, I'll just make it up, and I wanna move here. Rather than call Five Railtors or BronRailter.com, where would be the best place that I could find to find out what homes are available? where would be the best place that I could find to find out what homes are available? And I think the mayor said a while back
Zillow.
How many are available and what price range and so forth.
I'm sure.
Where would be the focal point for me in Moline that I've heard, my cousin lives here, he's visited here, I stayed at the time shows or whatever. Where would I get on my computer and go to?
You go to Zillow.
You go to Zillow.
Go to Zillow.
Yeah.
The real estate online. Yeah, Zillow.
You've never done that?
And they don't give you.
I've been here eighteen years on the move. But I've.
You are, you are sometime.
However, the Chamber is getting.
Or another, huh?
That's going to say Holiday Island Visitor Center, you know, and when our sign gets replaced. It says Visitor Center. So we do get a lot of visitors that come in.
Okay.
And we can refer them to wherever, answering, to answer the questions.
And that's what you get.
Okay.
Everything for sale in Holiday Island. And it'll give you a map.
Okay.
And all the dollars and they'll tell you which real estate agent to go to.
You can have, if you want to use some filters like put price, then it'll do all that.
Okay.
You, you haven't moved very much yet.
No, eighteen years ago.
And that's very nosy about what houses are going for.
You'll be shocked, move your own up and see what it, you'll be wanting to sell it.
My son's smiling as I turn eighty-one next week.
We'll revisit the advertising stuff. I'll pull up the NATA stuff just to make sure that what's in the budget is right. And we can talk about it at the special meeting and go forward. Next on the discussion is the website. Website is probably forty, fifty percent done. But the question with having the additional budget is, should we want to hire somebody to do it? Contract somebody to finish that website up?
I have a volunteer that'll work until after, you know, she'll get it up and running as well as the Facebook until after the election and we can decide.
Do you have a volunteer for it?
I have a volunteer.
That works.
And she will start tomorrow.
That volunteer got a broken arm?
No. And, and Michael has someone for future, right?
Possibly.
For the collection.
Yeah, for the collection, yes.
Yeah, for the collection possibly.
Linda, do you have time?
Done a lot of that, ain't she?
Do you have time to develop her website?
No.
You're probably in the same category I am. I can work on it for so long and then have to get up and run from it and
Yeah.
there's just not enough time.
But we have been looking at outside sources to do it and it's very expensive.
A thousand dollars or more a month, right?
Well, just the development part was, what, seven, nine thousand dollars?
Right, that's, that's my growth, my, the Chamber growth.
Seven thousand for a year.
Was seven thousand. My growth time was seven thousand the first year, five thousand there.
Oh, it's a bang-up website that a lot of cities in Arkansas use that company. But it is, it's expensive.
And.
Wait, seriously?
They could probably put it together in two hours.
Okay, have you looked at GoDaddy? Because they do a fantastic job and they're way less expensive.
Who's that?
GoDaddy. GoDaddy will do the website. They'll do the website. They've done one for me. It's multiple pages and it's, and I can tell you, it was not very expensive, right, wasn't it, none? Of course, not kicked off Facebook's memory season.
Like a full, a full-time, uh, my, a Facebook man, Facebook person's over a thousand dollars. And that's three posts, three posts a week. But right now, this is a thirty-year-old, so she likes this kind of stuff.
So we actually have a volunteer for?
Actually have a volunteer starting tomorrow to, up to, to, to work on, uh, visit Holiday Island, US and.
I'll make a motion for that to happen.
Just be sure you have a backup that knows how to use whatever software they're using.
What, what she's gonna, yeah, it's the HyPro's website that Bryce developed for AMP. I understand.
I wouldn't tackle it myself, so I mean, just find some, have somebody in your back pocket.
Luckily, we're to the point where it is a content management system now. And so it's mainly the data entry of stuff that has to be done at this point.
And it's WordPress.
The, uh, the main part of the visual graphic part of the site is done. Now it's just getting the data put in place and get everything.
But we understand your concern. Yes, that's a big concern.
So if, if we have somebody volunteer for it, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion to make that happen, so. It's better, it's better than I had an idea for.
Do we need a motion? It's a volunteer and they got it.
Less motion to have a volunteer. I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm like motions accepted.
Well, I'll, I'll second that one. If, if you're going to make the motion for volunteer, I'll second it. Uh, all in favor?
I agree.
I guess. So we'll do that. And that takes a little bit off my plate because it is.
You're going to have to give it.
Time consuming. That's fine. I can spend some hours doing that. That's not a problem.
Okay.
Uh, but I've probably spent eighty or ninety hours on it already.
Because you've developed the website. It's the state of entering right now.
Uh, that entry is definitely not it. Uh, moving on, Commissioner comments?
I have one, Mr. Chair, and that is for both Hy-Sid, WLC, and the City Council and maybe this committee as well to encourage the reporters to come here and/or watch our broadcast on YouTube. I think it would, it's very good that when you do a story, no matter what paper it's in, or even if they don't do a story, at least they can ask the questions from the meeting. And it doesn't get into some of this confusion that we talked about earlier in the meeting, that rumors are going around absolute outright lies. But I, I've called both papers. And we're supposed to have the head of Carroll County News today at our church breakfast, but he's ill, quite ill, and so he couldn't make it. But he is committed to, I think, covering Holiday Island better than it's been in the past. Those of you remember Mayor and Linda, when we had Kate LeGuaral here, reporter for the lovely Citizen, which is now the Echo, uh, Eureka Times Echo Paper. But at any rate, she was at every meeting out in our building, every meeting, every month. And we get a lot of publicity. We've got a lot of rumors straightened out and so forth. So I think not only on social media, but we need print media. We don't have a radio media here. But to get the news out that's correct, that's what I'm trying to say. And so I know Peggy, you usually, we, we make these public announcements of when our meetings are and so forth. And if they can cover it, if they can't get over here, they can, uh, YouTube, I think it's real important.
Any other Commissioner comments?
Uh, will we, at one of the meetings here soon, with like five properties that did the pool pass this year, will we be able to show numbers on how well they've used to at least just manage? I think, I don't know what they were with other ones, but preliminary, preliminary looks, doesn't look very well.
And?
Yeah. I, uh, we talked, Rich, I don't think you're at that meeting, but with the mayor, but some of us have talked about maybe Hy-Sid and/or the city or this committee sending out a letter to each short-term rental sometime in January maybe, and mention the fees for swimming at the pool for next year. Uh, and that that Airbnb or that, that short-term rental person, owner would know what it costs and have all the fees. I think Rich has some ideas as far as what those fees would be and our committee would be looking at those for both the initial fee for the short-term rental and the people that come in every day. I'm for lowering it. Others are for keeping it the same or maybe make it higher. But at any rate, if we, if they knew that this is, let's call it a hundred dollars, let's make it easy. Hundred dollars and it's four bucks a piece to get in. You have mom and dad and two kids. You're paying sixteen bucks and you're coming from one of my short-term rentals. Then everybody knows and the staff over at the pool has no problem. Okay? Ken Brown, you own this rental, you pay your hundred bucks, your guests are coming in, sixteen bucks goes in, we're all done. We don't have any problem with turning kids away with their little swimsuits on. And we have a much better welcoming stance to the pool and the rec center. And I think for them knowing it, I'm not, I mean, they may not know, it's like this, what we're talking about, newspaper and so forth. They may not have ever heard that they had to do that. But if you send a certified letter, I just got one today, five or six bucks, and then that would be worth the aggravation that was caused by not knowing it.
Ken, did you ask me to draft a letter, sample letter that might be able to go out?
Yeah, it's a good one.
Either when it, the, the AMP tax passes and the city has to send a certified letter, maybe we could include the letter to the short-term rentals explaining how important it is and how wonderful it will be if they would buy this pass and increase their marketing to their kids.
I think there was a, a conversation about it once. You talked about sending out a certified letter from the SED to the, the short-term rentals. And I asked if we could pardon rough in sending those out and split the cost between that because we were already going to have to notify these people of the AMP passing at that point in time. And so there was conversation of.
The first idea was to send a letter out with the assessments.
Okay.
Okay.
That was the first attempt. And then we see how that did, then we would send them certified.
Okay.
Because then we could get the number of certified, once they've signed up or they, then you could cut down your certified letter expense down. So say you got a hundred or two hundred AVBs and a hundred and fifty, get the letter, sign up. So then you're only sending out fifty certified letters instead of two hundred.
I'll be happy to give you the letter if you can use it or not. It's a marketing letter.
Any other Commissioner comments? If not, public comments or online comments, either one.
I have one public comment. Uh, I was tremendously impressed that Yellow Frisbee got thirteen thousand people to come out here. Is that an accurate number?
I, I.
It was a fluke. She said she targeted, was it the Gilmore Girls?
Yeah.
Thirteen thousand Facebook, uh, with fans. And she told them she had merchandise and she was making their sugar cookies. But when you looked at the way she phrased it, it was a festival. And so when they came, they were expecting it to be in a park with a gazebo apparently, like.
Oh.
So many left, but many stayed because they wanted the birch and the sugar cookies. So.
So did she make a lot of money from people at stake?
Yet. But she had six hundred people, you know, she made an event and six hundred people said they were coming. No, we all know there was a lot more because.
She told, she told David Dobrin that they made as much money in that one day as they did in the last three months.
Yes.
I don't, I don't doubt it. It, it was all the way out.
Yeah.
Down in this parking lot, all the way to the end of it.
They filled out.
All the way down to the Chamber almost.
And they're thinking about doing it again, but this time it would be more of a festival.
Yeah, because she advertised vendors, a vendor or something. Uh, but they were closed for three days making the stuff.
Making all the stuff out, yeah.
Yeah.
So way past the information, you're going to make it an actual event and festival, come apply for a grant because they worked.
Wow.
Whatever it was.
Gilmore Girl.
It's a TV show.
TV show.
Hall of TV show.
My wife is getting into it, so.
Must not be something I would have watched.
Apparently women get hooked on it pretty easily.
Well, I'm trying to find out which, which television show should the Chamber do next so we could bring some more people in.
What did she do on Facebook or social media?
Facebook and she targeted with, you know, boosted.
People on Facebook.
She targeted that particular group. Like I would target fishing people.
So if they had liked that or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it pops up on their Facebook.
Interesting. I think that's good.
People came from all over the place.
I heard people came from five hours away.
Wow. And they waited in line for hours too.
That line started at eight in the morning, eight in the morning and at two o'clock it was still there.
Eureka Springs Independent was there early, so we should be having an article in the paper about it.
Oh, one other thing. I think, I think we need to get a farmer's market out here, seriously.
Someone's working on that. They're trying to make some money to bring it out. We have talked to several of the people. Um, the problem is they do such a fantastic job in Bentonville and somewhat in Eureka. And they don't have enough product to come here also. And Berryville.
Well, there's a group getting, uh, one together up in Eagle Rock, I know that.
Yeah.
Up here in the interstate.
Right. But someone is working on that, trying to bring a farmer's market.
That said, we have tried to have farmer markets here and that in the past.
And they've never worked.
Hasn't gone over.
They bring over the stuff that didn't sell from the other cities. And I tried to get a bunch of them up for the ribs and rides. And like they said, well, we just ran out of product. You know, it was apple butter. I don't have any apples left. I don't know.
Yeah.
And they charge, Eureka charges a hundred dollars a year for their farmer's market. And so they come and go when they feel like it. And that's every Thursday. So it's not a moneymaker. It's a people satisfier. And they talked about doing it over in the Casey Realty parking lot. So it was visible. He had approved it and stuff like that. Yeah. Uh, but I don't know the status at this point yet. But it's a good idea. It just has never worked.
Any other public comments? Moving on, scheduling that. Schedule one. What was the date for that?
Would be either October fourteenth Monday or October fifteenth Tuesday.
I can't, I can't beat your Monday.
Okay. So you want to try the fifteenth? Anybody?
Do fifteen.
Fifteenth?
Let's do David.
I want to hear it.
Thank you.
Same time.
Everybody go for October fifteenth?
Yeah.
Six o'clock? Put that one in there. And then we do have a November meeting. It's technically for the fourth.
Yeah, the day before.
The day before the election.
I might want to reschedule it to the sixth.
That's a Wednesday. You can't, the interferers.
Could be your full, full, your tenth meeting.
Is there?
Could we, could we, no, we can't do it.
No, what?
No, 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 never mind, never mind. That'd be considered buying a vote, so no, forget it. I didn't forget it.
We could have an election watch, uh, gathering.
Party?
Could, I guess.
On the fifth?
Would that be in the regular meeting? Is there any rules of moving that regular meeting? Well, see, y'all, y'all went to this at one point, right, about moving a regular meeting? Were there any rules against moving a regular meeting date?
Nobody's caught, called us on it. That, you know, there was a question, I raised the question. Do you have to cancel your regular meeting and then reschedule as a special meeting? And we decided, uh, after talking about it, not looking in any, you know, Arkansas code or anything, that, that you could just simply reschedule it.
Okay. So either we could have a November fourth meeting, which we won't have much change between now and then due to the election being the fifth, and wouldn't have much to cover, or we delay it till the?
November's Veterans Day.
The sixth.
It's Wednesday.
It's Wednesdays. I gotta have it on Wednesdays.
And I can't do it on the seventh.
Yeah.
So the first day I can do it.
Mr. Chair, I want to comment on, we waited for a school bond election about ten years ago. And I was over there because I was the chair of the committee on bond for Eureka Springs High School. I don't think the results got back until about nine PM.
Yeah.
That night. It's sort of slow. They're coming in from all little tiny areas, Carroll County. So this would be a Carroll County vote, right? Only it would be a city, city only. They're not very like.
Carroll County would be counted.
Carroll County would be counted, but just on the city side for the ballot, you know.
Do you want to move it to the eleventh, to following Monday? It's Veterans Day. I don't know if that's a problem with anybody.
Holiday.
It's a holiday. Yeah, most of Mondays are Columbus Day.
But it's the sixth.
It's Wednesday. That's not a good time.
Because of Elks?
Mm-hmm.
What about seventh, Thursday?
I can't do it. I mean, I could do six o'clock at the Elks. If no one else goes to the Elks. I can't do it since I have another board meeting.
What, what would we have to do? What would we want to do when it passes that we would not wait till maybe a week later or whatever? Would we have anything that's pressing that we would like to go?
That's what I think of celebrating.
Wake up the Chamber?
Yeah, we'll just wait a week.
Yeah, okay.
Wait, wait a week.
Is Veterans Day a problem for anybody?
Not really.
Okay.
Cool.
The eleventh? Is it Monday?
Veterans Day is a holiday.
Is that not good? I mean, I don't mind doing Wednesday if everyone else prefers.
What's wrong with?
We.
What's wrong with the eleventh?
Just.
What's wrong with the eleventh? It's just how it is. I mean, it's, it's, it's Veterans Day, but.
No celebration.
Okay.
Okay.
You're, let's make it though, with the eleventh.
November the eleventh.
At six PM.
Six PM.
Start moving things for days other than Monday, I forget.
Oh, yeah. Right.
Yeah, much of my other days are already filled with stuff, so.
Yeah, okay.
Good.
I've been there.
We, uh, Mr. Chair, the date, does the county clerk, cause we're waiting for that, this committee. You have, you just have to go on the website and find out what, what happened.
When she called?
How are we notified about election result?
Um, anybody know how the county's here is doing in the past?
They just watched the website.
Yeah.
Carroll County election.
The, um, the Facebook page. She has, she posted.
Yeah, you can follow, follow the, her webpage and hopefully.
County, County Dawson.
I'm sure by the sixth or seventh, I can call County Dawson, find out what the number is and, yeah. We'll, we'll know by the eleventh.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
It'll be in the paper by then.
Yeah. All right, uh, announcements, so have any announcements going on anywhere else other than, uh, you have Halloween?
I mean, everybody here knows it.
Everybody knows it. There you go.
I can announce it.
I, I had it on there.
Okay.
Is anybody listening? We can't, um.
Well, people do watch them afterward, so.
Well, we're still planning on our October eighteenth event at the barn, except the parking will be at the Hy-Sid parking lot where the boat players go. Hopefully, hopefully things work out. Just, we're not gonna have a bonfire, it looks like, but we'll have the rest of the event.
How's it going?
Okay.
You have a motion, did you?
It's a move.
You have a motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Already then.
Peggy, do you have to pick up all the stuff that night?
Yeah.